I know everybody's having a good morning.
Cheers.
I would like to remind everyone to please make sure that our cell phones are turned to the off or vibrate position. Also, please be advised our city council meetings are broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T U-verse, and the City of Gaston YouTube channel. This meeting of the Gaston City Council will not come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Allen Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Toles.
Here.
Councilwoman Williams.
Here.
Worthy.
Here.
Back.
Here.
Wilson.
Here.
Cannon.
Here.
Reed.
Here.
We have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Brian Harbison to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Will you pray with me, Almighty God? We thank you for this beautiful day that you have made. We thank you for your blessings on us, your people. We just pray, God, that as we do business today, we just pray for your wisdom and guidance for this council. Thank you for the mayor and his administration. Pray that you'll continue to bless him. Be with us as we move forward. Help us to keep our focus on you in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mrs. Gaither, we're glad to see you back with us. Not that we didn't like Josh.
Yeah, I know. Some people like him more and that's okay. One thing I do want to make note of is today is April 27th, the 10-year anniversary of many lives lost in Alabama due to severe weather tornado outbreak. Take time today just to talk with your family through what your plan is. Just remind each other where your safe place is, how to communicate in a disaster. Normally, phone calls won't go through, but a text will. So just remind your family of all the things that you need to have in place to keep yourself safe should there be a severe weather event. And just wanted to bring that back to everyone's attention and we still remember the families that lost so many that day. Now on to COVID. Last week, we had the Unsheltered Homeless event that we tried to target our communities that were underserved at the Elliott Community Center. I'm sad to say that we only had 25, but those 25 were very thankful and grateful. We also had many, and I want to mention them because they've helped us throughout this year, whether if it was for testing or giving out PPE. I want to mention some of the individuals, groups, and city departments that have helped us so much. So if you'll just bear with me just a moment, I wrote them down so I would not forget anybody. I probably still will. Of course, the Gaston Police Department, Gaston Fire Department, Parks and Rec, Gaston Public Works, Community Development, the Edoah Baptist Association, United Way and 211, RSVP, Tabernacle of Praise, Salvation Army, the Homeless Coalition, Veterans Upward Bound, JSU Social Worker Students, CED Mental Health, Gaston State Students, Catholic Center of Concern, of course, our Edoah County VoAD. There are so many groups that have done so many different things, but these were just a few of those that helped last week and that are helping today. Today's event is at Carver Community Center. It began at 8:30 and it's over at 3:30. It's drive-through or walk-up. Just before I came in, I checked to see how many they had vaccinated this morning and it was 16. I want to remind everyone, we are not through with COVID. We've lost coworkers. Our coworkers have lost family members. We do not want to enter our fall and winter months in a bad curve. Get your vaccine. They're here, they're available. Go ahead and be vaccinated. Let's get a head start on the winter and the fall coming around. Let's not relax too much, our social distancing and our hand sanitizing. Yes, if you've had a vaccine and you're with family or friends, yes, if everyone in the room has been vaccinated, you can restrain some, you can let loose some, but let's not get too, too comfortable. We're hoping that once we get through the winter, we can get back to comfortable and normal as we knew it. I'm not saying there won't be things that will never change again because we have learned that there are some things that have changed that have been for the better. And I hope that we can hold on to those things that are for the better, but there are things that we miss and we want to get back to in full swing. So just be respectful of each other. Even if you've had your vaccine, it doesn't mean that others have and it does not mean that you can't be a carrier and give that to someone else. So I want to remind everybody too that vaccines are every Tuesday and Thursday morning at the Edoah County Health Department and then open it up to questions for you. Anyone have any questions?
Hey, Deborah, how many people in, and I guess breaking down Edoah County, has got the one shot and never came back to get the second shot? Do you have a number count or?
I don't have a number count of that, but we can bring that up on the conference call tomorrow and find that out. I'm sure that public health will have that. And there have been, you know, many cases like that. I just don't know the number.
You know, the age group that, what is it? Was it 24 to?
49.
Are they, are they take, are they getting the vaccine?
No, ma'am, not as much.
That's what I, that's what I know. They're saying that we're guinea pigs.
Yes.
And so the ones that, and I said, the ones that are giving us the COVID are the ones that refuse to take, to take the shots.
And I've had that discussion in my family too.
Oh, wow.
I have grandchildren and children who are of that age.
That's why I can say that.
Yeah, I can too because we've had the discussion in my family. So yes, that is still our population that is not getting vaccinated as much. And we would encourage that because there's been, the upward tick that we have seen has been in that age group. They're the ones who have been contracting it. Actually, we have a volunteer for emergency management now that's in her 30s and she's in UAB and in critical condition on a ventilator. So, you know, you're not immune, you're not immune.
Deborah, what's the age today? Is it 16 and up, correct?
Today is 18 and up. 18 and up. 18 and up. And it's the Moderna.
Thank you.
Yeah. Deborah, can you, just as a general public service announcement, can you remind people the three different types of vaccines that are available right now?
Right. There is, the Johnson &amp; Johnson is back on the market. And I want to say that with any vaccine, there are potential side effects. So just be aware of that with any that you take. So Johnson &amp; Johnson, Moderna, two doses, and Pfizer, two doses. But right now, all we have in Edoah County is Moderna. Okay.
All right. Thank you once again for coming and giving us an update.
Thank you. We appreciate you.
Okay. We will continue with our agenda. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session and city council meeting that was held on April 20th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payments of accounts for the week of April 16th through the 22nd.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Do we have any proclamation? We will proceed with our unfinished business. We have an ordinance rezoning property located at 1117 Hooks Lake Road from a R1, one-family resident district to a B1 neighborhood business district. A public hearing was conducted last week and the ordinance was presented for first reading. The owner requested the rezoning in order to operate a real estate office at this location. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next unfinished business is the ordinance rezoning property located at 1045 and 1047 Tuscaloosa Avenue from a B2 John Business District to a B3 Central District. A public hearing was held last week and the ordinance was presented for first reading. The City of Gaston Planning Department requested the rezoning of the rear portion of the properties to correct an unintentional split zoning that occurred when the front properties, portion of the properties was rezoned to B3 in 2011. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
This is the time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing, allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of resolution assessing nuisance abatement liens against the properties. We have five locations and I'm going to call out the information for all five of these and anyone who wishes to speak may come forward. And also, I'd like to get the consent of the council that we group these all together. Do I have a consent?
Yes, ma'am.
Item number 10 is a resolution authorizing, a resolution assessing nuisance abatement at 1320 Alabama Avenue in District 3. And this is Brittany Owens and Zach Smith, Christopher Williams and Lynn Thomas, State of Alabama, at $3,341.40. The next item is a resolution assessing abatement lien at 1343 Forest Avenue in District 3. Robert and Julie Spurling in care of Robert Higgins, Robert and Julie Spurgins in care of Robin Higgins, at $3,841.40. The next item is a nuisance abatement lien at 1349 Forest Avenue in District 3. State of Alabama with possible redemption rights of Annie Harris and Mike Telefunno at $4,441.40. The next one is a nuisance abatement lien at 503 North 10th Street in District 3. This is the State of Alabama, the right of redemption of David C. Porter Jr., James Alexander Jackson, and Kalitha Shaniqua Al-Ahly, $2,491.40. The next assessment nuisance abatement lien is 560 Tyler Street in District 3, State of Nola Aron and George Aron, Irma Aron, Lee Aron, at $3,941.40. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to any of these resolutions? If you'll come forward and tell, tell me which one. Give your name and address, please. The address on the properties that you're, for first, your name, please. I'm sorry.
560 Tyler Street.
Okay. Your name and address, please.
Irma and Aron. My address is 108 Mountain Creek Drive.
And you're at 560 Tyler Street?
No, that's where the property is at.
Oh, no, I'm saying, is that the property that you're speaking about?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, okay. All right. Go ahead.
Well, I have received a letter from the city where it was talking about the property and the amount on the property, which is 39, $3,941.40. And I really came to, really tried to set up a payment on it because I'm paying taxes on it and, you know, I have other family members and everybody looking at me, you know, trying to do everything. Ain't nobody else helping me out. So I figured if I would just pay the taxes, somebody would, you know, at least try to pay on a lien on the property. But I guess not, so I guess I have to just do what I got to do, pay for it.
Did you receive a bill from the city?
Yes.
Okay. That bill should have had a payment.
Yeah, here they go, right here. It's like four different types of payment options.
Yeah, so.
Yeah.
And you look over those, whatever is acceptable to you, boy, so.
Well, I'm gonna have to go with the cheapest.
That's fine. That's even on the bottom. That's a board.
And I'm willing to make the first payment today.
Okay.
Do you just go the third form and take that?
Yes, sir.
And we'll ask if that may type.
Okay. All right.
And get them off to you to do that.
Okay.
You get it.
Thank you.
All right. And thank you, sir.
Is there anyone else to speak in any of the opposition to any of the rest of the properties? Let's look at item 14 and let's, let's look at it first. So what is your, what is your pleasure on the assessment nuisance on 560 Tyler Street?
That's where we table it for 30 days, 30 days.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to table item 14 for a period of 30 days, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to table for 30 days.
For the items 10, 11, 12, and 13 that were read, what is the pleasure of the council for these nuisance abatement?
Move to adopt.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the remaining four resolutions, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt all four.
Our next item on the agenda is awarding bid number 3451 for on-site grinding services. The Purchasing Department has recommended awarding the bid to Adams Clearing Company, LLC, and the amount is $6.68 per cubic yard for the first year, and then $6.81 and $6.94 for the following two years respectively. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any, is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
The next item is a resolution authorizing an application and acceptance of airport coronavirus relief grant program through the Federal Aviation Administration. Funding provided by this grant will be used by the Northeast Alabama Regional Airport to prevent, prepare for, and respond to coronavirus, and the maximum amount available is $23,000. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
All right. At this time, we have committee of board reports. We have Ms. Whethington coming from the Parks and Recreation Department.
I just wanted to give an update for Parks and Recreation and what's upcoming. We do have Bassmasters Elite Series will be at Couso Landing, May 6th through the 9th. You'll start seeing them come into town on Sunday. Takeoffs will start approximately each morning at 5:40 a.m. and weigh-ins will be daily at 2:00 p.m. We will be hosting an expo at Couso Landing on Saturday and Sunday that will feature the sponsors for Bassmasters and other local vendors. This will be on Saturday and Sunday at noon to 5:00 p.m. And then spectator parking, we're asking everybody to park at the venue until that's full and then we'll direct traffic to other parking lot. Other events in Parks and Recreation is, the Splash Pad is scheduled to open on May 3rd. Summer camp registration is open for Carver, Walnut Park, Thompson, and Raymond Hill. Mitchell Summer Camp is already full, but we do have a waiting list started. We are taking 31 kids this Saturday to participate in the ARPA District Track and Field. Youth baseball is going well. We are hosting travel ball tournaments on the weekend, kind of struggling a little bit with the rain, it's not cooperating as well, and with field conditions. We're getting ready for our summer food service program. We'll be handing out free food to kids 18 years and younger at 16 different sites and the sites will be announced soon. Strawberry Day will be held on May 14th at Fifth Street Market. This will include our local farmers. And then the Farmers Market will reopen on May 28th and those are 7:00 a.m. to noon at Fifth Street Market on Locust Street. Wheels on the Hill will be June 11th through 13th at Nakalula Falls Campground. Barbarian Challenge registration is open right now. It will be held on June 19th up at Nakalula Falls. Summer Concert Series will be back starting in June after First Fridays. As always, Parks and Recreation is still accepting applications for full-time positions, part-time positions, and seasonal positions. Applicants can come to the Personnel Department or to the Downtown Civic Center. I've also been asked to announce this Saturday, CCRC will be hosting First Saturdays down at Carver Square, and they are featuring music by Kendra D'Angelo. That is from 5:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. this Saturday. And then to go along with that, DJI will be bringing back First Fridays starting in June. Thank you.
All right. Are there any more department reports? We have a citizen request, Mr. Suttles. If you'll give your name, your address.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Larry Suttles and I live at 2322 Hill Avenue. I was up here a couple of weeks ago mentioning some things about the trash and some of these places that needs to be cleaned out as far as ditches and drains. Now, my understanding and what I see, I'm not the chief engineer, but I, I'm not, you know, because look and see this stuff's never been cleaned out for a while. Some of it's getting done. If we do micro-management, it can all get done. They still working on some of it and I'd like to congratulate them. I even went out and talked to some of the guys that's doing some of the work and they're doing a great job. And also with Mr. Harbison.
Harbison.
Harbison, he did a great job. There's a house, house up above me, two doors down, there is three white ladies stay in that house. I mean, next to that house is very old. I have some pictures back there that the councilman have, that they caught the guy yesterday living in the house. And there was more than one person, but I caught him. I got, I got cameras on my house now just because of all this commotion going on. But also, like I said, the guys for the city, they're doing a great job. If they keep on pushing it, we can get all this stuff done. I mean, look like the city done, you know, it's been let down for a while, but we need to get out of there. And, you know, like I said, it's gonna work, but we're gonna have to push it to make it work.
All right.
And that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Suttles.
Mr. Suttles, I forgot you told me last week when I was at your house visiting, to tell the mayor that you was gonna ride him around for the next First Friday in your convertible, your kid convertible. I forgot to tell you that.
I got a special car for you. I'll bring you out and put you.
I just want to make sure I told you.
And after this, you'll see it work.
You may not believe it, but a couple days a week, I get out and ride around and all the complaints I'm having. I see people too, but we don't have a lot of people working right yet. We still got some. And then with the stimulus checks, there'll be some more coming in pretty good as soon as they quit paying enough stimulus checks.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. We have remarks by the mayor and council. Where do I start? Councilman Williams?
I don't have anything, Madam President.
Councilman Beck?
Thank you, Madam President. I've had a few calls about the medians on Rainbow Drive. And while I don't speak for the state of Alabama, obviously, they are about to start paving Highway 411, which is also known as Rainbow Drive. If you've noticed, driving up and down, there's some orange markings on the road. Heath was telling me that's the construction folks that are marking and so things are getting ready to happen. We do have an agreement with the state that the city can, we do keep up the medians, but knowing that the paving is gonna happen and they're gonna alter some of the median cuts and where you can turn and go, you know, the choice is made not to do anything until after the paving is done because that money would just be, wouldn't last very long. So just hold tight. The state of Alabama, our doc's gonna be paving pretty, pretty soon, should be starting hopefully in the next, what, month or so, or maybe a little bit longer. Depends on weather and a lot of other things, probably out of their control. But that's gonna be Rainbow Drive all the way through the city limits of Gaston, so it'll start, I believe, in Rainbow City and go all the way up past Twin Bridges Golf Course. So that is long overdue and where I think we're all, those of us, which is probably everybody in this room that travels Rainbow Drive every day, it'll be nice to not have to dodge potholes as we come up and down the road. So thank you, state of Alabama. Y'all may have, lately I had mentioned Friends of the Falls and I may be stealing Ben's thunder, Ben, so I apologize if I did. You can thank him too. But I saw a post on Facebook where they picked up trash once again up at Nakalula Falls. That's just a great group of volunteers that really help with Nakalula Falls area and with our Parks and Rec Department. So just a big thank you to the Friends of the Falls. I know my friend Glenn Ingram is part of that and Chris Robinson is part of that that owns Blackstone. He's real involved with that. There's many others. I shouldn't name names because I've forgotten all of them. But they, they do a great job. They're, they're always working, always walking the trails, helping do all kinds of things up at Nakalula Falls. And last but not least, I want to give a shout out to my junior high and high school classmate, Larry Suttles. Larry and I have been friends since, what, 8th grade, about 1974, kind of grew up together. Larry's got a great heart. We talk all the time about stuff in the city and I appreciate your having enough energy, Larry, just to care because I think that's what I'm seeing is that you care about Gaston. So thanks for, for what you're doing and I know the mayor's looking forward to riding in that convertible. I would ride in it, but it'd mess my hair up, so I don't, I don't think I need to do that. So it's, thank you. Thanks, Madam President. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilman Wilson?
Yes, ma'am. First of all, I want to say thank you to, to Twin Bridges Golf Course. We had the opportunity to play in the Patriots Association Golf Tournament yesterday. For those that don't know, that was a big investment that the city made last year to redo all of the greens out at the golf course to try and get, you know, some more traffic in there and have an overall more enjoyable experience. And I think it was a great investment. The course looked great. It was packed. It was a beautiful day and obviously Ben reading everything he does for veterans in, in this community. It was nice to be a part of that. So kudos to the golf course out there. Things are looking good. Also, just a quick clarification on my comments from last week. When I was talking about what a great citizen and patriot George White was in this community, I kind of overlooked Ms. Susan Little, who was the one who actually got the Turrentine Historic Registry put on the National Historic Registry. She did all the paperwork, all of that. And then George came in and Susan, Ms. Little continues to sit on that board today. And that's been almost 40 years now that she's been working on that. So I just wanted to clarify that. I hated that I, that I left her out of my comments about George last week, but that's all I have, Madam President. Thank you.
Councilman Reed?
Yes, and to tag on to what Mr. Wilson said, the Gaston Edoah Patriots Association, we had a great, great, great golf tournament this year. And thanks to all of y'all, really. Y'all helped to put it across, along with other people in town and other backers and so on and so. To Twin Bridges, Chet Hallman and his group up there, Thomas, all you have to do is just walk up to Chet and say, "We're gonna have a tournament, 100 people," and he takes it from there. So I take all the kudos for his, all his hard work is what it amounts to. But again, y'all, thanks and we really do appreciate it.
Councilman Cannon?
Thanks, Madam President. I just kind of echoing back what Councilman Beck said a while ago about the litter. We've got probably seven or eight people in Alabama City that's starting to pick up litter. Bobby Hill picks it up. Scott and Lisa Fortenberry, they're picking it up. And we've got about eight, seven or eight more in golf carts that ride around and pick it up. But the problem is, we're seeing now is by the time these people pick this garbage up, within a week, it's back there again. We picked up, they picked up five garbage. We picked up, they picked up five garbage cans full up on Kershaw, Marston, and Little, and we, you know, after, they keep going back on the same streets. They're not gonna ever get around the whole Mill village picking it up, but I wish you would think about when you throw something out, just put a little bag in your car or something, a little garbage sack or something in the car, and just put it in there. If you go to McDonald's or wherever you're going to, what restaurant, you know, fast food places, put it in your sack there and throw it in your own garbage can. That would help these people a whole lot, but I should appreciate them doing that. And I guess I'm gonna let the kid out of the bag, Mayor, about Larry's convertible. I don't think Kia makes a convertible, but I could be wrong, but Larry has one of the first Kia convertibles I've seen. A tree fell on his car and demolished it, and it still runs like a new car, so that's what he's gonna take you in when you get ready to go to the First Friday, but I've seen it. It's pretty nasty, except the top's off of it.
I was gonna say, get the tree out. I saw the picture.
Yeah, the tree's out of it, so that's what you'll be riding in the First Friday. That's all I have.
Let him over and get him in.
Councilman Worthy?
Yes, Madam President, thanks. First, I just want to say thank you to Pastor Dr. Betty Robinson. We handed out food again this morning, food boxes at Handy Chapel Church, so kudos to her. I also want to say thank you to EMA and the state for putting on the vaccine clinic at Carver. Hopefully, more people will come on out. Then I just want to say, want to remind us that we, as elected officials, when we're elected, we represent everybody, including the ones that didn't vote for us. We still represent them, so we should want to do for them when they call us, because I know people in my district that didn't vote for me, but when they call and want something done, I do it, because, see, I don't hold grudges, and this is America. You can vote for whoever you want to vote for. So I just wanted to put that out there. Thank you.
Mayor?
I just wanted to encourage a little bit more about the vaccines that's available. If you hadn't had it, you need to get it. You can read up on it. There's a lot of scary tales out on some things that people say that's not true, but Ms. Gaither, she, she's done a great job, and I really appreciate all that her and her folks have done during all this time, because they've had a lot of trust. They've had a lot of trash on them. But also, you can still, you know, be careful about the, I call them super spreaders, where you got 15 or 20 people in a party in a house. That's not a good thing, so beware of that. That's all I got to say.
Listening to Captain Jackson this morning about the police department, I'd just like to put out there, if there's 20, at least 20 good men or women who want a job, the police department and the fire department is taking applications, and they'll be glad to have you on the force going through training. But we're in need of police officers and firemen, and so I'm just putting out a word, if you are, if you're interested in protecting others and protecting yourself, then get an application and join the police, the Gaston Police Department and the Fire Department. That's all I have. I ask for a motion to adjourn.